What's that? Good afternoon, I'd like to bring the Personnel and Human Services Committee to order Tuesday, April 19th at 4:03 PM. Deanna, will you take the role?
What?
Here.
Kelly?
Here.
Durantson?
Here.
The gift?
Here.
Here.
Are you here?
Yes.
Take another drink. So we have a court, right? All right, before us, we had some minutes from 3:15, 16. I have one correction.
What correction?
In the first paragraph, there was in about the sixth line, it talks, it reads which reflects bacteria, PCPs, it should actually read PCBs. So that correction being made, I'd like to...
Submove.
Support.
We have a motion of support. Any other corrections? Any other discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign, motion carries. At this time, we allow the public to come before the committee. Anybody wishing to do so, they would approach the podium and just give us your name and address and speak out.
My name is Mike Bristow, Bangor Township, and I'll make it short here. There's a unique set of laws that we have to follow as job instruction guidelines. It's what's prescribed by your titles. This is the drainage law that, it's universal, but it goes across and it speaks of Michigan. And you can see that we're kind of in a unique situation when you look at the drainage laws for Michigan. That is a copy for the entire group to copy or view. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mike. We should probably get that to Deanna.
I'll give the...
Then if she can email it to all the commissioners.
William McPherson, 3669 Loriot Road. I just want to publicly thank Mr. or Commissioner Craigor for keeping me up to speed with what's going on. Thank you.
Anybody else like to speak to the commission today? Seeing none, we'll move on to petitions and communications. We have item A, the MSU District Coordinator Annual Work Plan Agreement between Bay County and the MSU Extension. What is your pleasure?
Submove.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any discussion? Seeing none, oh, yes.
Yes, Mr. Chair, the new director for MSU Extension is here. I'd like to maybe introduce yourself to the commissioners.
Diane Smith.
Thank you, Diane.
Thank you. So yes, I believe this was already, the amala, this was already approved long ago, but we're finally going through the formality of approving it. So I had the opportunity to be able to talk with Controller Tom on last Friday, actually, or Thursday. So I enjoyed that. I look forward to being able to talk with a few of the rest of you to be able to understand what your interest is in MSU Extension here and if there's other projects that you believe that we could help with. We're already putting together a list of projects, and I left it out in my car, but we'll email it to Tom, some other economic development type of services and land use services that we offer as well. I think I just met with Mike Hanley over, friend over in Saginaw, and you know, he continues to tell us we're the best kept secret, and so we've got to stop the secret. So hopefully, we can do that more this year, so. Yes.
Yes, Commissioner, agree.
Can you just give us a little background of where you came from to this position so we all kind of have a gist of what...
Sure, sure.
...how to talk to you a bit about, that'll give us a little better direction on what we think we can get from you and what we can't.
Okay, I've been with MSU Extension for 25 years, and I started out in Clare County as the 4H agent. So the same type of a role that Jody Schultz has right now downstairs. So I was in, doing the 4H work for about 10 years between Clare and Midland County, and then worked within the campus with 4H as well, and in a partnership with Michigan Y Conservation Club before they kind of had a few issues there. And from there, I totally switched and went to economic development. So I was in an economic development position for the Ione County Economic Alliance, it's the rural community, and did that close to 10 years. And that was still in a partnership with MSU Extension. So I was the community economic development educator for MSU Extension while serving in that role. So I worked with Brownfield Redevelopment and owed a Brownfield EPA grant, so I've been involved in that type of stuff. And then moved on to be a business counselor through the MSU Product Center. So I've counseled businesses that had a food product. So, and I thoroughly enjoyed that as well. So I wanted a new challenge for my last 10 years or so with MSU Extension, and so I took this role. So I'm just mainly, you know, the main role, which maybe you've noticed with Deanna, is obviously working with county government and to secure funding for the staff that we have to make sure we can match up our services and expertise with the needs of the communities. Because that's why we're all here, right, to be able to help our communities. It's not about us, right? So I look forward to talking with you so I can know what some of the needs are that maybe we're not matching our expertise to yet, so we can add some more value. All right. Thank you, welcome to Bay County.
Yes, Commissioner, agree.
Just see, there's a 4H coordinator in the program here, and back a couple of years ago, I was with 4H, just a couple. And it's a good program. There was an article about 4H more, going more into the city, becoming involved with City Kids also. I know a lot of cities are trying to develop like gardens and garden plots and stuff like that, and it was art above 4H trying to move into the city and helping some of the programs.
Right, so exactly, we have a lot of school programs that are going on right now. One of the schools is actually paying, paying us for some of the school programming that we're doing with them through a grant that they have. And then we have the Tech Wizards program that works on some of the STEM skills that are what we're really looking for right now in science and math. So we're planning on having Sidney that does the Tech Wizards come and talk with all of you about what her program's been and, you know, what are some of the results of that. Okay?
Thank you. Just one more question if I could. Essexville has a nice little group of people that garden a section of property off of Woodside. I know Bangor Township has kicked it around trying to do that also. Is that something a person would be able to contact you with if they had a desire to do a neighborhood garden and how they could get it started and what some of the rules are?
It's pretty common that we work with neighborhood gardens. So just trying to think of what staff member, it may not be a staff member that's actually here, but you know, we have access to all these staff members in the state. But yes, so why don't we have them do that? And I think what I'll have you do is contact me.
And if they're going to contact you, of course, here at the county building here, what phone number would they call? Maybe Bay 3 TV can get that...
Well, so I cover five counties, and so I am actually housed in Shilohsey County.
Okay.
Okay, but I would line them up with the person that they, you know, would contact. I would just want to learn, I would want to talk to them more about what exactly are they looking for. You know, what type of expertise do they need?
I'll take the card.
Okay.
I'm all done.
You're all done. Anybody else? Seeing none?
All right, thank you.
I think we have a motion and a second, correct? All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under B, we have Health Director. We'll do each one separate, I guess. Agreement with Bay Air and Act Behavioral Health Authority, the Coalition Services, seeking approval.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under item two, under B, is the agreement with Bay Health Plan Community Based Telephone Survey, seeking approval. What is your pleasure?
Submove.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under item C, we have Personnel Director Vacancies. We could probably group these all as one.
Submove.
Support.
We have a motion of support, and that's for the Row Patrol, the Sergeant, Row Patrol Deputy, Public Health Nurse, Registered Nurse, Youth Development Workers, and Youth Development Supervisor at the Juvenile Home. A motion of support, any discussion?
No. No, as...
Hmm?
One's full-time, two part-time.
Right. Oh, did I say that wrong?
Yeah.
Sorry. Supervisors, full-time, part-time?
Not a supervisor.
Oh, it's not a supervisor?
Nope.
Oh, sorry.
You're getting ahead of yourself.
Oh, I'm getting ahead of myself. I knew there was one. Okay, so we have a motion of support, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Now, we get, under item C2, we have the reinstatement of supervisor position at the juvenile home.
Submove.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any discussion? Commissioner Coonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's the new position, right? And half that allocation or cost will come from the state, right?
Pardon me?
Half those, that expense will come from the state.
Yes.
That's a position that was phased out, and now you just want to have a little bit more oversight or supervising.
We have a second shift and weekends that aren't being supervised at all. In fact, I stay till later on certain days just to ensure when something's going wrong or we have restraints or seclusions or anything like that.
Good, good. Thank you very much. You know, I think it's probably, definitely a needed position, but I think when you look at some of the dollars that we're going to be incurring over the next, you know, time period with some of these new positions or enhanced positions or positions that are being reclassified, it only lets us know that we really need to get additional revenue to the county. I think we need to focus on that monitor, DDA, that has fulfilled its project, and those dollars should start coming back to the county because sooner or later, we just can't keep incurring expenses without getting additional revenue. And I believe that revenue would be well-served coming back to the county, providing services to the community because that project has been completed.
Seeing none? All in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Under C3, we have the reclassification of the Public Health Director.
Support.
We have a motion of support, any discussion? Commissioner Coonan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I think that we've already looked at this and sent it back, and I believe Administration did a study which saw that information in it. But I believe we also need to look at other positions within that department as well. And I would like to see those come to the board for reclassifications, not just the folks at the top, but you've got other people that are doing work that need to have their positions reevaluated as well. So I hope that, you know, I'll support this, but I hope that in the very near future, we do get those positions in front of us as well.
Would you like to speak?
If I could, Mr. Chairman, we will follow up on that as we discussed earlier.
Anyone else? Seeing none, all in favor? Aye. All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. We come to referrals, I don't know that we have any. Unfinished business, I think we're okay there. Any new business? No new business, how about miscellaneous? Commissioner Bigick doesn't have... Oh, he does.
Clean up is this Friday. I was reading the paper, there's a lot of things going on. Just one thing, mold should be, there's going to be a mold. There's a whole rate of things on Fri- or Saturday, it's Saturday, the 23rd, so if anyone wants to volunteer, I'm sure they'll take any volunteers, I want to help do any of the cleanup in the city. Thank you.
Commissioner here.
I'm still on the Saginaw Basin Land Conservancy, the SBLC, and the park over on Euclid, you know, that's Earth Day for the kids, you know, and families. They're all, there's so many projects going on this weekend, it's amazing. And I know that's the one, I got to pick one, you got to pick one, so that's the one I'm picking to go to with my grandkids, but that's at that little park, the Nature Trail back there.
You speak on Linear Park, right next to Region 7?
Yeah, right next to Region 7, and between there and Kites. So that's a good, it's going to be fun. They have, they're going to have awesome treats and stuff for the kids and even the adults, and you know, bring your own, you can bring your own loppers and your pair of gloves, they got, but they got everything there, everything we need, so I'm looking forward to it. Hopefully, it'll be like it was yesterday and not like it is today. But today was a two-pack.
Yeah, that's, for those that lived in the area a long time, that's the old Bay County Country Club property back there.
Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The last two days at the county park, we had the thrill of taking the area fourth graders. There was almost 275 of them through a rotary project up there to get them acclimated up and get them outside. We had authority in there on bird watching to help with the tours and stuff. Dan did a real nice job up there rushing to get everything done for the little kiddies, and they really enjoyed it. You know, they were polite, pretty quiet, and we did see a lot of birds and stuff like that, which was pretty nice. But it encompassed all the fourth graders in Pink Island School District, Stanley, Stanley Sterling, Air Knack Eastern, and everybody that's kind of like in our rotary club area there. So passing on to Dan and everybody at the park, they did a really good job, a lot of rush.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So we had all those kids all at one time?
Well, they came in in shifts, and there was about, there was two groups heading in two different ways and probably 50 at a time, so the parents were there also, you know, so it was, it was enough. I mean, it was enough of parents for as many children as we had, because they had, you know, you know how fourth, you can imagine fourth graders, well, somebody didn't see something, well, then they all had to go investigate. Trying to get them to be quiet so they could hear the birds was one thing, but they were really good, you know.
Didn't lose any kids, huh?
No, and I, we picked up one somewhere. And then, well, it was a late night or something, I seen a kid sitting on a bench, and I go, "Well, what are you doing here?" And he goes, "Well, I came in late." I said, "Oh, okay, I thought he just popped up out of somewhere." Yeah, he belonged to us, so it was all good. Like you say, a beautiful day yesterday, but she was a little brisk today on Bay, and some of the kids weren't...
A little windy.
Yeah, they weren't dressed appropriately.
Commissioner Taylor.
I'm going to refer to Laura because I'm going to talk about her email she sent out today, is what I was going to do, and the tour of the sewage treatment plant on Friday from 1 to 3, is that right? The public is invited to come and tour the sewage treatment plant in Saginaw and in Bay, and then there were a couple of other items on your letter. Actually, I shared that on Facebook.
Oh, good.
A lot of response.
Thank you. There's a Fisheries Workshop this evening at Knights of Columbus, it's a Lake Huron Regional Fisheries Workshop. And then, yes, on Friday, which is Earth Day, April 22nd, there is a celebration focusing on water quality in the Saginaw River. Both the city of Saginaw and Bay City are opening their retention treatment basins for open house. Those are the treatment facilities under storm events where the water goes into those, and it goes through primary treatment, and then a secondary for bacteria. And then it's sampled, and then it's discharged, and so they have data that shows 98% of the time it is meeting recreational standards. On occasion, they have a chlorination pump that goes awry, but they have multiple pumps in there. It's exceptional quality discharge. So the title of the celebration is No Sewage in the Saginaw River. There is a morning session from 9 to 11 where the city of Bay City is going to be speaking over the treatment staff over at the Old Depot from 9 to 11 with Dr. Joan Rose, who had been up here before in the Saginaw Bay area, sampling some of the shoreline muck and the bacteria in the muck. But, so it's, there are flyers, and there are things going out on Facebook. It's Friday, 9 to 11 informational at the depot, and then 1 till 3 tours at the retention treatment basins.
And they're every half hour?
Every half hour. Wear good shoes, walking shoes. Thank you.
Where are you standing? Oh, boy. Commissioner Craigor, hold on.
Well, seeing that we're talking about outdoor activities, I'd like to remind everyone about our Beach Wellness Program, which is going to be on June 25th. It also falls on the same weekend as the River Roar, so if you want to start your day well, you'll have the ability to either walk or run back into Tobaco with a race. We'll have volleyball on the beach again, and we're looking for a great day, and again, it's June 25th, it's a Saturday.
Okay, Commissioner, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And Laura, correct me if I'm wrong, but in relationship to the CSOs, whenever we have an event, and a lot of times it'll catch the newspaper, and it'll say, "A million gallons of water was discharged into Saginaw," wherever, that's treated. So a lot of people still have the misconception that that's where all sewage, but that's treated, and like you said, 98% of the time, all the water, at least within the city, because the city has primarily combined sewer and catch basins, so all of that water, 98% of the time is treated, gets released into the river, where in an event, it is still treated. If it has to get released, it gets released, but any other water outside of having a combined sewer, either through the end of a pipe or a ditch going into a creek that gets into the river, is not treated. So based upon the meetings that I have attended in the past, about two-thirds of the contaminants that get into the river, that gets into the bay, is a non-point source. So, you know, I think you do a great job educating the public in this regard, but I think we need to continue to educate them so that they become more aware that the sewage treatment plant is doing a good job, is doing a service for the community, but I hate to say it, runoff, whether it's off a farm field, or it's off a street, or someone's lawn, or the end of a pipe going into a creek, into the river, into the bay, that's where a good majority of the contaminants do come from. And you do a great job educating the public on that.
Thank you. If I could just, you're right, even if you look at the geographic area of the urbanized area of Bay County is a much smaller portion of, you know, the land that is, you know, we have runoff going on throughout the watershed. I will say, on these CSOs, keep in mind the reporting requirement was a state law that was passed back in the 70s, and that was because that was sewage. It was untreated sewage, it was just flooded out from big storm events, instead of flooding at the plant, they would open the gates and let the stuff bypass. And because then there was a public health risk associated with that downstream, they required that these wastewater plants posted in the newspaper that said, "Hey, we had an overflow." So be aware, downstream, like Saginaw would do that for the city of Bay City. And so since the 70s though, and 80s, Bay City and Saginaw have spent over $170 million constructing these retention treatment basins, treating this wastewater, and therefore, it's a whole different type of discharge, it's a treated discharge, but the law remains on the books, and so that's why they still do that reporting.
And that's also done at the Bay County wastewater treatment plant. So we have one also associated with the county, which takes in a lot of the townships. I just want to remind people that. Okay, we have Mr. Durantson, or Commissioner...
Commissioner Coonan addressed one of those.
Okay, so now...
You know, a few years ago, when we did the phosphorus ban, which they said we couldn't do, and we did, as one of the runoffs that were going into the water, in this day and age, with the technologies we have, if we know what chemicals or fertilizers are in excess that are running off the blonds in our community, we should be able, I'm sure they got, the testing probably showed what those are, that we have excess in our wastewater. I mean, there are probably things that we can probably do as a county, maybe pushing forward to the state again, to tweak whatever those fertilizers are that are sold in the area that are causing the runoff, so that people are getting more, not getting more than 100% into their, into their grass or into their fields. There's got to, there's got to be a way to do that going forward, and I, and maybe there's, these are things that are illegally being done that are causing some of this, which is possible. But the general landowner would be, you know, if they go to the store to buy their fertilizer, they don't know in most cases what's in it, and they put it on their lawn because Scott says you're supposed to do this in March, and June, and August, and September, October. That if we work with those ingredients, maybe we can bring those levels down, which cause algae growth and other problems in our beaches, and cause less work to be done in the wastewater plant, which then reduces the chemicals we have to use to clean that up, which then saves us money in long term. I'm just saying that there's probably something this county board could do if we know, if we knew what those were, what those chemicals were, and I'm sure if I Google, do it myself, and figure out what those are, which is where we got the phosphorus from. I guess I just put others as an informational thing, and that I'm always open to working on those kinds of things.
And just that whole effort that this board did when you passed the phosphorus ban and led that effort in the state, that, even if we re-talk about that, re-describe that, remind people that it's the phosphorus, because it's the phosphorus in the near shore that's so high, because in the middle of the bay, the fish biologists are saying, "We don't want that number to go down any farther," the phosphorus levels. And that's like this Fisheries Workshop tonight, that's what you'll hear from the biologist saying, you know, "We need phosphorus to sustain a, the zooplankton that sustains the basic fish web." So it is about educating, reminding people about that, you know, the phosphorus, not using it unless you absolutely need to. So that would be, that is something that we can do as a, you know, fairly low cost, public press releases.
Commissioner, agree.
So Laura, does that mean those of us that choose to have a clean beach isn't destroying the fisheries and the great lakes?
No, no, no. You know, Ernie...
Keep going.
That muck on the beach is growing in fairly shallow setting offshore, and it's coming back onto the beach through, when the wind blows, as it decays. What the biologists are talking about is in the middle of the outer bay, in the water column, those phosphorus levels, they want that kept at that level. But it really, it's dealing with fragmites, it decays along the shoreline, it's just staying there. Drains, you know, discharge at the shoreline, that's the stuff that people seem, know identified as the concern.
Well, my understanding is with the vegetation that's killed and goes out into the bay before it actually comes on our shoreline, it actually steals the oxygen out of the water, which is a detriment to the fisheries also.
Right.
So kudos to those that want to take the junk off the beach.
That's right.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else? Well, that was a lot under miscellaneous. So, any other announcements now? Okay, seeing none?
Well, Jerry's always in our...
Submove. Some move, we are adjourned.